And we're live on Facebook. That's every channel we have.
Good evening, this is Vice Mayor Camp calling, City of Gallatin Council Committee meeting for May 26, 2020, the order. I'd like to register Governor's order, sue it to Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16 and Number 34, and need to limit to the community spread of COVID-19. The May 26, 2020, Gallatin Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. This meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the Council and the citizens of Gallatin. To join the meeting, you can contact this web address or phone number on the line. Without objection, we'll move on into the agenda.
Still moved.
But no objection, we'll call it the order. Mayor Kittrell, could you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Vice Mayor Camp, this is Susan. We need to vote to make this meeting online, to make it...
Most approve it.
I second it, Councilman Fennell.
Got a motion, a cast vote, and then a second, Councilman Fennell, is there any objections? Connie, would you do a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love. No answer, technical difficulty, and Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Camp, we have six yeses and one no response.
Thank you, Connie. Would you do the roll call now, please?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love, I know she's here, just can't hear her, and Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Connie. We have no amendments tonight, so we'll move on to public recognition. Jeff, take over. Jeff, yeah, and I'm public recognition.
Mr. Chubb, do you have your hand raised?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't, I'm trying to find where you are on Facebook. I thought you said it was live on Facebook, but I can't find it on the Gallatin City Government page. Is that where it is?
It should be. It's showing we are live. We're also live on our website and...
Oh, wait, okay, it's popping up as live. I think maybe it's working now. Hold on. Can you hear me? Okay, now you're live on Facebook. Okay, that was all. Thank you.
Number ending in 283?
You are muted.
Okay, phone number ending in 283. Do you have something you'd like to say? Kristi Carter, your mic is open. Okay. Liam Alexander. You'll have to unmute yourself. And Wendy Ross, your mic is available. I do see Larry Wise. I know you're going to be on item number two. That's everyone.
Jeff, it's showing on mine that Alexander lady is trying to talk, or who are the Alexanders?
Alexander, do you have something you'd like to say? Your mic is open. Okay. Very good. That's everyone.
No, I don't.
That's it, Mayor, Vice Mayor, right ahead.
Thank you. We'll move on now to Mayor's comments.
Thank you, everyone. I just have two quick things. One, I want to mention that Councilman Sean Fennell's birthday was this past weekend. I've stopped getting birthday updates since we've been doing these virtually, so I want to say happy birthday to him. And I wanted to make everyone aware that we are not extending the state of emergency passed today. So remember, under the state of emergency, there were some provisions, one being the suspension of utility cutoffs, the other being the suspension of door-to-door solicitation permits. Those are two of the things that will be impacted. I want you to be aware that that would not be extended passed today. And that would be all for me.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. So after Mayor's comments, we'll move on to the agenda. Item number one, Resolution R200629, accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin City in Carrollton Phase 2B. Mr. Tull.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I've got an item for accepting public improvements as described by Vice Mayor Camp, and this has been unanimously recommended. Carrollton Phase 2B includes Daystar Court, Ferdinand Drive, and a portion of Gulf Stream Drive.
I approve with Councilman Overton.
Did we get a second?
Second.
Motion by Cast vote, and then a second by Councilman Alexander. Is any discussion? Connie, we need a roll call to send it on to Council.
Okay, Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Yay. And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Kittrell. We'll move on to item number two now, Rotary Park. Ms. Bates. Unmute yourself.
I hear you, Rosemary.
Sorry about that. Usually I am speaking on behalf of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, but now, tonight, I'm talking to you about a project that I have had for several years, Liberty Branch Park. And first, I want to share my screen for a couple of items. And I just need someone to allow me to share my screen.
Yes, please.
I mean, the host has to allow me.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'm going to make you a panelist real quick here. Are you already a panelist?
If you will recall, the original agreement with Liberty Branch Park many years ago was that the city would reopen it, and the Corps would allow us, United States Army Corps of Engineers would allow us to reopen it, and then Morning Rotary would operate and maintain it, and there would be no expense to the city and no further request of the city. Well, things have morphed over the years, and there was some tree damage done several years ago, and city had to provide a remedy for that damage. And we planted lots and lots and lots of seedlings and other types of trees approved by the Corps, and that was sufficient remediation. Since then, the Morning Rotary Club has been maintaining the park, picking up trash, keeping it mowed. Last fall, several of us, myself, folks with Morning Rotary, Zach Wilkinson, and I can't remember who else from the city, met a couple of times with a gentleman from the Corps about clearing the brush between the large trees that lined up against the driver's testing property and those properties. And the Morning Rotary was given permission to do that with very specific instructions. I'm not going to go into what they are. They hired someone to do it, and that person damaged 26 trees. The Corps came out and looked at the trees and then sent us a letter that, again, 26 trees had been damaged, and the damage and restoration cost assessed to the city were just under $27,000. At that point, Morning Rotary stopped all work on the project except for keeping it maintained. We had them in, and we met about how we were going to remedy the situation. Zach Wilkinson was very involved in that, and I don't, let me see if I can share my screen now. It's still not letting me share my screen, Jeff, so just forget. I'm not going to try again. So we made it very clear to the Morning Rotary that while the city could possibly use in-kind forced labor, meaning forced labor, meaning the city could do certain work to get those trees remedied, that the Morning Rotary would have to bear some responsibility. And basically, the plan that the city and the Morning Rotary agreed to and sent very tentatively to the Corps of Engineers was to plant 10 very mature trees, meaning these are trees that are going to have to have a minimum of four-inch caliper, even up to five and six inches. The city could do the work to plant the trees, but the Morning Rotary would have to acquire the trees and possibly some other soil amendments and other things that would be required to make those trees healthy and thrive. Larry Wise is a partner on this phone call tonight, and he'll be able to tell you some more about that. We selected 10 locations for the trees and put together our budget very tentatively, and we sent that to the Corps of Engineers early this year. We have not heard back from them, not a peep from them about whether our plan is acceptable, when it might be acceptable. Of course, we wouldn't do any of this planting until the fall, which was their request. So we don't know where that's going to go. So that's one situation that we're still dealing with, and we don't have an answer on. In the meantime, during all of that, the Corps gave us final permission to put the kayak launch in, and Morning Rotary, along with Tennessee Scenic Rivers and city engineering and other city folks, spent a day getting that kayak launch installed, which has become incredibly popular at no cost to the city, volunteer work and those sorts of things. So there is a lot of activity in Liberty Branch Park. There's fishing, there's the kayaking. It's become a very popular park. Now that Morning Rotary has had a few years, and they've had turnover in their membership, and I'm going to turn it over here to Larry in just a second. They do have some ideas for the park, and they also have talked to the Noon Rotary about a partnership. But before we move any further with whether or not we should allow them, or the city, you should allow them to continue to add amenities, I wanted you to hear from them, their plan and their idea and their request for, I believe they still have a request for assistance with mowing. And Jeff, if it's okay with you to let Larry jump in and speak, or this is Larry Wise, he's the current but about to be outgoing president, I believe, of the Morning Rotary Club, and he's been great to work with on this project.
Larry, your mic is open.
Okay, I can't see myself, so I assume it's okay. The Morning Rotary continues to work at the park, getting a lot of things done for the park, and I'm seeing anywhere from 10 to 20 cars out there at time, seven to 10 kayaks really enjoying the kayaking. You know, people are there walking the dogs all the time. You know, I remember last fall, I had a complaint from a citizen saying we hadn't cut the grass in a while. So, you know, the people of our city are coming there quite often. I haven't been out there once, unless it was raining, where there wasn't four or five cars out there. People just having picnic lunches. Unfortunately, they don't pick up their trash a lot of times, and relaxing at the park. You'll see people parking out there at lunchtime, and just having a phone call, or just sitting out there enjoying themselves. But we realize, as a Gallatin Morning Rotary, we cannot continue to do this solely by ourselves. When the park plan was initiated with the city some years ago, the Morning Rotary had about 30 to 35 members. Currently, we have 15. The demographics changed quite a bit. I guess the average age, back when we first started, when we had 32 members, was 50 to 55. Now, about half the club is over 70, and the average age is about 65. So we try to maintain the weed eating of the perimeter all the way up to Gallatin Pike, which that big hill, we weed it by hand, and we weeded it all on the shoreline two weeks ago, so the fishermen can have a good area there. And we continue to pick up the driftwood and all the kind of woods that come in every time it floods, which has been quite a bit lately. We pile it up in big piles, and the city is very good when they have a chance to come by and pick up that. But it's quite a bit for four or five people in Rotary to try to maintain that park. So we are attempting. I made a proposal to the Noon Rotary to join with us, and the coronavirus hit, so it took about two or three months to get anything back from them. And, but now they're saying they are willing to join with us to maintain the park if the city will give the Noon Rotary a release of liability for the two issues with the trees in the past that Gallatin Morning Rotary created. That's a simple request that if that goes through, then I believe we'll have, instead of 15 members out there, we may have, we need 100, if we can just get that request done by the city to write that letter. We also realize that the one person cutting the yard now, the park now, is over 70 years old, probably 73, and uses his own riding lawnmower. About every two weeks, he's doing it by himself. He says, I don't know how long I would be able to maintain this. We said we could pay it, pay it through our funds this summer, but he said, no, let me go ahead and do it this summer, but next year, we got to do something different. So that's why I'm asking the city if they would reconsider the mowing of the park and also allowing the Noon Rotary to get that release of liability.
Before you answer on that one, just let me make it clear to the council that as far as the Corps of Engineers is concerned, the agreement they have is with the City of Gallatin. They certainly understand that Morning Rotary is a partner on this, but any liability, for instance, the letter saying that we are on the hook for almost $27,000 for the tree damage, the only entity that the Corps of Engineers will pursue is the City of Gallatin. I hear what Larry is asking, and the Noon Rotary has not been involved up to this point. So I don't really, you can write a letter that says you would probably, you would not pursue any actions against them, but they were never part of this. And as far as the Corps of Engineers is concerned, neither is Morning Rotary. It's the city, the city that's done the damage, and the city that has to make remediation. But if you're willing to say something to the Noon Rotary, if you're agreeable to this, that would be great. But the bigger question, too, is how do you want the park to continue to operate going forward? As Larry has said, they need somebody to start mowing it. They do have some other plans down the road, but quite honestly, I told him and them, those need to be tabled until we get a good year or two of no problems with the Corps of Engineers and not add amenities that would require the city to then come back and take over and take care of. So I just wanted to share that before y'all shared your thoughts with Larry and decided what you might want to do.
Rosemary, I got one question, and that's why didn't we go after the person that done the damage to the park?
I can answer that, Rosemary. I was in France at the time when they hired the guy to come out here with us like a bush hog. And prior to that, prior to me going to France, I had walked the tree line with the Corps of Engineers twice. We marked all the trees that are over one inch in diameter with pink ribbon. And however, when the Rotary guy that walked with the tractor, I guess it had track wheels, and once in a while, it kind of shifted real hard, and it would scar a tree. You know, and we didn't cut down any trees, it scarred them. They're all still living. But according to the Corps, it was $26,000, $27,000 damage. Even though someone was walking with that machine, it's the nature of the machine kind of hurt and jerky at times, that hit some trees that were already marked.
So my question is, Larry, if I'm building a house, and I'm the contractor, and I mess somebody's house up, I'm liable for that house?
We understand that. We consider that. In fact, I think we considered that, talked about that at the mayor's office one day, but we did not think that was correct. He gave us a good deal. However, he made mistakes, and we have to be liable for that, not him.
So you're saying you're liable for it, but now you're asking the city to be liable for it, right?
No, no. What I was saying to the city is the Noon Club would join with us if they can be released from anything that we have done as the Morning Club.
Well, that's between you and the Noon Club. That wouldn't be between you and the city.
Well, I understand, but the president of the Noon Club said they need something in writing from the city.
That says that you're responsible for it? That says the Morning Rotary is responsible for it?
They wanted a letter saying that Noon was not responsible for it.
Yeah, Noon just wants, the Noon Club wants a release from damage done to date, and I understand that because they want assurance that the city's not going to come against them if, you know, this doesn't get remedied satisfactorily, which I'm confident it will. But I understand that. I don't have, I don't see any issue with us. Ms. Homicoli, do you? I always try to read her face, so.
No, as long as we're not releasing anyone that was responsible, I don't think we could hold the Noon Rotary Club responsible for someone's actions when they were not involved at that point. Of course, we wouldn't release them from any future potential liability.
I'm okay with releasing them for any past problems, but I'm not okay with releasing everybody. But I am okay releasing them if they want to release because they didn't do anything to it, so.
Yeah, that's all they're asking. I think that's fine.
I do, too.
I do.
Is the mowing, I guess, do we need to ask David Brown, what he?
I think we need to work on that over the coming year. If he's going to continue to mow it the rest of the summer, we'll have some time, and they'll have some time to look at options.
Larry, how many trees was it? Was it 10 trees that you got to plant, and they're estimating the 10 trees to be $27,000?
10 trees with the point diameter, along with the equipment that the city has, like the back hose and dump trucks and things like that, that comes up $25,000. But I think the trees themselves was like $11,000.
Yeah, Sean, unfortunately, I can't share my screen with you, but Zach Wilkinson worked a lot on these estimates. And basically, what we came up with is that the Morning Rotary understands it has to purchase, or they can get them donated, we don't really care, but they may have to spend money on this because they have to be trees of significant size. They can't be seedlings or anything like that.
I understand that. Larry, you gonna, the only thing I can say is if, I'd be glad if you want to come by when you start purchasing the trees to donate some money to you or to help in the trees. I pass that park every day, and I think it really looks nice down there, and I see a lot of people using it.
We're seeing tremendous activity there, and I think by taking that middle row of bushes out where that tree line is, it really opened up the park, and everybody can see it. The police asked for us to do that as well, the Gallatin Police, so they can see the park from Highway 31 National Pike. They can, they're down there almost every time I come, so it's good to see the police riding down there.
Sean, the trees alone are going to cost around $11,000, and there may be some other soil material. Total repair cost, including trees and all, Zach has estimated it right at $31,000. So the Morning Rotary understands that it's responsible for at least a third of that cost, and that all of the city's expense will come with labor and equipment and personnel already being paid by the city.
So, Rosemary, you need us to make a motion to, or just give the mayor permission to send a letter to them saying that we don't hold the Noon Rotary responsible, or what do you need from us?
I think that's, I think we needed you to understand that they're going to ask for the city to mow it come next year. We needed you to understand the expense that we're still obligated for on the trees, and that they do have fiscal responsibility for it, the Morning Rotary does. And yes, third, if whatever, whatever action needs to be taken to allow the mayor to let Noon Rotary know that from here past that we would not hold them liable for anything related to the park.
I'm not going to agree to all of that, but I'll agree right now that we won't hold the Noon Rotary responsible if we need that part of it out of the way right now.
Yeah, I think you're probably fine to send a letter without voting on it, because as Susan said, we can't hold them responsible anyway. So are we okay just sending a letter without voting on it, Susan?
Yes, I would think for that. You can, as long as everyone is in agreement.
Who do we talk to to find out who's in charge of this project at the Corps?
I've got the names of the two people that we email consistently. One is one of the rangers that comes by and checks on it, and another is a woman who works at the Old Hickory Dam office.
Do you know who issued the fines, for lack of a better word?
She's the one who emailed us the letter. She's not the one who signed the letter, though. And Jimmy, I wasn't suggesting that you vote on the mowing tonight or any of the future amenities until my recommendation would be, we've got to get through the tree remediation first. That hasn't even been approved. Our plan hasn't even been approved by the Corps. But I did want you to know down the road that what they were going to be coming to you and asking.
Right now, I'm okay with releasing the Noon Rotary, so.
Rosemary, this is Susan, City Attorney. I do have one question, because all of this happened before I came. Do we have a contract or an agreement with the Morning Rotary Club? And do we need to amend that? Because if we need to amend a contract, probably would want us to have a resolution, so there's documentation of that.
I'm not aware of any agreement that the city has with the Morning Rotary to operate the park, except previous minutes or some kind of letter from the Morning Rotary saying they wanted to operate it. The only contractual agreement we have is between the city and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers when we ask permission to reopen the park.
Okay.
Has anyone tried to negotiate the, with the Corps, maybe this could be done more economically?
Steve, I would...
Rosemary, you froze.
Maybe close to a million. I don't really, it was a huge chunk of money. What they're asking us to remedy this time around is very insignificant compared to the remediation that was expected that first time around. And I can talk to you more about that on the phone if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and I'll add, too, that I think that their negotiation, allowing us to use labor and equipment and being able to replace these trees with smaller trees, and we're not having to replace all 26 trees, and so there's some of that factor, too.
Are they specifying what kind of trees they want, or can it be our choice?
They have to be native trees, and there's a list that we have to choose from.
That's all I had, unless y'all have more questions.
Could they all be one type of tree, or they got to be different kinds?
I don't think that matters, but they have to be from the list. And I think, I think Ms. Wilkinson has worked a list of those.
Is the proper name for that park, Pickle Park, I mean Rotary Park?
Right now, the name of it is... Uh, right now, the name of it is Rotary Park. It doesn't say Morning Rotary. It doesn't say Noon Rotary. It just says Rotary Park. That is not how the Corps of Engineers recognizes it though. They don't care what sign we put out there, but it's Liberty Branch Park to them.
Now, that's, that's why I wanted the Noon Rotary to join. We don't have three different rotaries here. Uh, we're one rotary. So why not have one park? And everybody pitching in together. That's what I proposed to them. And, and with this agreement of release of liability, I think we'll have a very nice park in the future. Keep it going.
Thank you, Larry and Rosemary.
Thank you.
Everyone finished?
Is there any action that the council need to take other than, uh, authoring the mail to send a letter? Or release from this point forward?
She said not.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
All right, moving on to item number three. This is orders. Oh, two zero zero six dash two four appropriated fifteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars for a pool city hall, city hall vehicle. Rachel Nichols.
Thank you. We had four offices that had some older model vehicles that weren't exactly reliable.
Rachel froze.
She froze.
Use vehicle that is more reliable, that can be used by each of the departments. Uh, none of the departments use it on a regular basis, so we'll just share.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, motion about Councilman Hayes, a second about Councilman Love. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. Uh, so Ms. Rachel, are you standing? This one car is going to be sufficient enough for everybody to use?
We think so. Um, the attorney's office, the finance office, the IT office and planning are the ones that sold vehicles. And we use our car maybe once every couple of months. So we feel like we'll be able to share the one vehicle with no problem.
Tron, do you want to do roll call vote to move it on to council?
Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Uh, passes seven to zero.
Ms. Kettrell, moving on to item number four. This is orders oh, zero zero five dash two three appropriating ten thousand dollars for the census, census rapid response grant. Ms. Nichols.
Yes, sir. We've received ten thousand dollars from the National League of Cities to use for, um, to help us implement various things that would help us, help the citizens in our hard to count districts respond to the census. We have two districts in Gallatin that show up on the census map as hard to count. And this ten thousand dollars can be used for a number of different things that would, um, encourage those citizens to respond to the census.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I missed who made the motion. Ms. Overton?
Mr. Overton, yes, sir.
But Councilman Hayes made the second. Any discussion? Roll call vote to set it on the council.
Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
It's seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Uh, next item on the agenda is application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for federal funding. Rachel Nichols, Finance Director and Don Bandit, Police Chief.
Thank you. We just wanted to let you know about a grant opportunity that we have and we applied for. It's a total of seven hundred twenty-three thousand ninety-two dollars that will be used for, um, mental health crisis response program. The city's portion, um, we already have within our budget for services, salaries. Um, we'll be using that as the in-kind. And then we put in four hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars from the federal government for that. I'll let Chief Bandi add anything he wants to on the, how the particulars of the money. But we just wanted you to know that the grant had been applied for.
So you don't need anything from us, right, on either one of them?
No, sir.
Um, once they're awarded, then we would need to have that money appropriated. But we're informing you of the applications.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, move on to item six. It's a grant approval approval, application review of justice assistance for federal funding for Cosse, Nichols and Chief Bandi. Same thing.
This is part three of the grant. We actually have part one already. This is part two and three. Um, this one would be for nine hundred thousand dollars. And again, there's no city match on this. Um, and it would also be used for the behavioral, uh, mental health program.
Keep up the good works.
Any other questions?
Sounds like a good one.
Go forward. All right, we'll move on to item number seven. It's, uh, monthly financial reports. Ms. Nichols.
The financial reports for February, March and April were included in your packet. You have any questions?
Reports didn't look too bad, Rachel.
No, sir, not yet. And even our state shared money that we received in May, which would have been for March's activity. Um, it, it didn't look bad at all. We had a really good business tax, uh, return. And even our state shared sales tax was higher than the previous month. So as of March, we were still doing okay on the state money.
Great.
Any other questions for Rachel? Then we'll move on to item number eight. It's a resolution R two zero zero six dash three zero, Dr. Plan Service for the annexation of five parcels totaling five hundred and twenty-four point one four acres plus or minus. Uh, tax map, there's one eleven slash slash zero zero two dash zero zero, one one two slash slash zero one three dash point oh two, uh, PO one oh five slash slash oh four seven corner zero zero, PO one oh five slash slash oh four eight uh, day zero zero or period zero zero, one 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 slash slash one one eight period zero zero. They located south around Free Drive, west of Price Lane and north of Hartsel Pike, provided for an effective date. Bill McCord and James Fin, or Jim Fin, or James Fin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just wanted to give a brief overview before we, uh, had the opportunity to talk about this. As you know, we've been working, uh, in a direction for several months here. You have, uh, adopted, um, some agreements that are dependent upon this annexation and rezoning. And it's my hope tonight that we'll go ahead and move this on to, uh, council next week for the next meeting to be, to be adopted. To, uh, bolster what has been said before and just recently the conversation regarding the city budget. This clearly has an opportunity to have an incredible, uh, positive effect upon our, uh, bottom line. I need you to know that we also have, uh, four, possibly five other industrial projects that would be coming on. So the, uh, um, project you adopted, the strategic plan that you adopted, having us aim towards, uh, technology is coming into focus. But we have retained our, our focus also on industrial, uh, development. And so I think between the two of those, we're, have the opportunity to make sure that our community, our city, more so than maybe any other city in Tennessee, has the ability to come out stable. We had hoped that this would propel us and make us, uh, much more successful than we had maybe ever, uh, thought. But, um, right now, the vote is before you, has the ability to make sure that we have a, a solid footing and are in a better position than most communities moving forward. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bill McCord and have him introduce the technicalities of what we're trying to accomplish here today. Bill?
Yes, Council. Uh, this is Bill McCord, City Planner. I'm going to be presenting this item. I'll be discussing the, uh, zoning issue together, uh, with the annexation and plan of service. So there's three actions we're asking you to take tonight is to prove, uh, moving forward with a resolution for a plan of service on this area that's, uh, scheduled for annexation, the annexation resolution and an ordinance for zoning the properties, uh, in that area. And I'll give you a brief, uh, presentation here. I'm going to share my screen now. So if you could confirm that you can see the screen, I, uh, I need a dis, I need that participant, uh, screen sharing, okay? So uh, can I have the, Jeff, can I have the screen sharing approved?
Yeah, what, I'm going to make you a co-host. Let's try that real quick here. Try it now.
Okay, can, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, um, we have again, uh, three separate items. There's an annexation and a plan of service that goes along with that and a rezoning. The annexation that we are considering right now includes all of the areas shown on the screen that is in the hatch pattern. And you outlined in yellow. So what we're looking at is five hundred and twenty-four acres of lands to be annexed and establish a plan of service for. These properties are, uh, adjacent to the city on the west and some on the east. Uh, they're along Roundtree, uh, Drive or Bull, uh, Road here on the north side. Uh, Bright Lane on the east side of the property. Touch Hartsfield Pike in a couple of locations, including one lot that's located on a piece of property that's already in the city. Just there is shown here kind of in the light gray. And then another larger parcel or several parcels that's located between the sunny side subdivision and properties that are already in the city. The, um, so I want you to know that that, the annexation's a little bit different than the zoning. Uh, this map shows the various parcels, the various, that were read by, um, Vice Mayor Camp, the actual tax parcels that are identified in separate colors here. All of these are subject to either annexation or zoning. The, uh, current, um, and up until last week when the Planning Commission, uh, and you're not going to be voting on this, but the Planning Commission did vote and adopt a resolution which changed the land use on all those properties that are being annexed and being zoned, rezoned. So right now, what we have are properties in the county which are rural residential, are R one A. They completely surround on the north and the east side. We have this parcel in the orange that's owned R fifteen PRD, which is a residential development master plan community. We have this narrow strip of, and it's not constructed, by the way. This, this property was just zoned that way and nothing's been done on the property. But it does have a small, uh, corridor that accesses, um, Hartsfield Pike. And then we also have this parcel that's shown in green, which is a, uh, area that was reserved and kept as agricultural residential zone. District serves as a utility easement. And then we have the property, uh, immediately to the, uh, south, which is, uh, split zoned. And it's in the city's planning region. So it is split zoned with, uh, residential, uh, zoning districts, two different residential zoning districts. The current, the dark blue line is the current city limits, uh, of Gallatin. And this was the change, uh, that the Planning Commission approved with their, uh, land use amendment. And everything that you see that how it toggles there, you can see what changes to purple. So they designated that area as Airport Road Commercial, I mean, Industrial. And so, uh, this is the properties that they are also going to be, uh, asking for rezoning.
Industrial restricted.
It, it'll be industrial restricted zoning, yes. Uh, this is one of the parcels, the larger of the parcels that, uh, butts Bright Lane. This is a survey. This is the parcel just to the east of the Sunny Mead subdivision. This is the parcels on the south side of Roundtree Drive. And this is the single lot that's, uh, adjacent to the corridor that they have on the property that's already in the city. So this little, uh, fifty foot wide or sixty foot wide segment here is already in the city. They'll be picking up this parcel, this tax parcel, which is lot. It's, uh, fronts on Hartsfield Pike as well. And, uh, this is the bulk of that property there. So this will be rezoned. You see the corridor there that connects to Hartsfield Pike. And then this is the, uh, area that was zoned agricultural, remained agricultural residential. It serves as a power line utility easement. So, uh, I'm going to turn that off. So that's the bulk of the changes. Again, there are, uh, three actions we're asking for, the annexation and a plan of service. A separate resolution on five hundred and twenty-four point one four acres and a request to rezone. Um, not only the five hundred and twenty-four acres, but additional acreage, which totals, uh, um, four hundred and eighty-three acres for one parcel. Uh, forty, a little over forty acres for another, a hundred and sixteen for another of those. And the six point five is the agricultural zone for a total of six hundred and forty-six acres. The Planning Commission did review each one of these requests and recommends approval.
If I interject, um, we put in the mail today, letters to all of the joint property owners just to ensure that they knew what was going on. They will have the opportunity to have input. We want to make sure this was, was very, very transparent. So, uh, no one should be surprised. There will be a public hearing that you will be, um, privy to. And, uh, I wanted you to know that everyone has been notified already, again, with those letters in the mail today. Um, and I, again, with what, uh, Mr. McCord has said, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions.
Motion to send eight, nine and ten to council, Steve.
I got a second on that.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Love?
Think there's any discussion?
I'm sorry, on that parcel that goes to Hartsfield Pike, is it surrounded by residential area?
Are you referring to the one acre lot down at the bottom?
No, I, I have lost, I lost it on the, on the screen, but it was a big, a bigger amount next to Sunny Mead, maybe.
So you're looking at the green, uh, right now at the picture that's up there, you're looking at the green parcel?
I'm thinking of the purple one, I believe.
So yes, the purple parcel is already within this. Please go back to the previous picture. Thank you. The purple parcel is already in the city limits and it has a sixty foot wide access to, um, twenty-five on the south end. There is a one acre parcel, roughly one acre parcel just to the west of that sixty foot access that is also owned by the Caldwell family and is being included in this so that the, um, access to twenty-five will be somewhat larger. But yes, that's all included.
Could you go back to the previous screen for a second, please?
Is that the correct one?
Yes, that, I've had some questions. I've got a business in that area and I've had two or three people ask me about it. And I just wanted a snapshot so they can see it.
Okay. Anything I can answer for you, Councilman Fan?
No, that's going to do it. They just want to know where the lines were. No, that's gonna do it. They just want to know where the lines were and where the proper, where the annexation was going up to. One of them just wanted to make sure he wasn't gonna be annexed. Um, it's it's not gonna affect the Oakland Drive area, is it?
No, sir, and and reassure everyone that calls you, unless they have asked to be annexed, they will not be annexed. Those are the new regulations. Those are TCA code annotated that have been passed, have been in 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 effect for four years, I believe now. Unless they ask to be annexed, they will not be annexed. Now, there are some, you know, out outside considerations. If they live in a subdivision and eighty percent of the people say they want to be annexed, they may be overruled, but the folks you're talking to that have individual parcels or not in a in a neighborhood with an HOA and those kind of things, unless they request to be annexed, they will not be.
I think the question's already answered for them.
Any other questions? So we have a message to send. Resolution R two zero zero six dash three oh. Resolution two zero six dash three one, and resolution two zero zero dash two five to council. Ms. Kittrell, you have to do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes? Councilman Hayes?
He's muted.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
It's a seven zero vote unanimous.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next.
Commissioners, if I can, I I wanted to remind you that uh, and I think we've mentioned this before, is this item will be going to the council for first reading uh next week, uh the first meeting in June. And then it will have a public hearing and a second reading two weeks after that.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Moving on now, it's resolution R two zero zero six dash two eight, addressing military, Department of Police Officers in the Police Department. Chief Bandy.
Oh, yeah, this is a resolution. Uh, we've done it in the past. We've had an officer deployed uh last month for uh, he's gonna be deployed for four hundred days, and we would like to backfill that position uh with a uh a police officer so we can get him trained in and get him on the streets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion of Councilman Fan, a second by Don Alexander, I believe it was. Any discussion? We'll give some roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennell? Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes? Councilman Hayes? Councilwoman Love? Councilman Overton?
Yes.
It passed with the six eyes, and I could not hear Councilman Hayes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to other business now. That concludes our gentleman. We want to either business or any of our business to come for this council. Any department is wish to speak?
Uh, yeah, Don Bandit, Police Department. I would like to tell you all that Officer Green that was injured back in the fall in the uh traffic crash has come back to work on the partial bases like duty. I just want to let you all know that. So he's doing a lot better. I think he's got to have some more surgery. That's why you got to be aware of that.
That's good news, Don. Thanks.
Commissioners, Bill McCord again. I I just want to remind you on June fourth, that's next Thursday, that there will be a planned Gallatin meeting. It'll be a virtual meeting where they discuss scenarios for development within the city or future projected uh populations and potential types of development that you might want to consider incorporating into comp plan. So uh that will begin next Thursday. I believe at six o'clock, but I I'll double check that.
Where?
It'll be virtual. It won't be a regular in person.
Will we get an invitation to that? To a Zoom invitation?
Uh, if if Rosemary's on the, Rosemary, could you answer that?
Uh, we already have posted uh a way to link to it via Zoom, and yes, you will get a more formal invitation from the Greater Nashville Regional Council. But yes.
Thank you.
And it it'll give you an opportunity to be interactive.
Thanks.
Any other department is wish to speak? I see them. We'll declare this meeting adjourned. Good night, gentlemen.
I'll be careful. Thank you all.
God be blessed.
I'm sorry, I missed it.